Try to connect with Lori.
I just texted her.
She said that she's, I just think she's on the council. We have two separate. Council and uh. Work session.
Can we just call her? Anybody happen to remember our names out there if they wanted to hear board?
Just all say here and then move on.
I know he's not a roll call, but he reflects.
Tammy Colazo, present.
Donovan Smith, present.
Your broad, present Luke Deviner, present.
Hey Steve Newell, present.
Online caster, present.
Six present, two absent.
Okay. Onto additions and changes in the agenda. Um, any additions or changes in the agenda? Okay, in which case then, I know we had at least one public comment. I don't think any other public showed up. April, correct? I think you're who has signed up. So I don't think we need to be overly legalistic, but if you want to come to the front. Have three minutes. Please. I don't know, let me ask this good question. Did you, which? There's three meetings tonight. Which one did you want to speak at? It's all the same people.
Talking about the policy.
It was admin originally.
I don't think it matters. We're not leaving between meetings. So if you want to have your time. Yes, formally speaking, please state your name and an surprise for the record and you have three minutes. I never actually ran this thing, so fair word. So whenever you're ready.
Hey, my name is April Octobek and I've been a borough employee for the past twenty years. I want to speak on behalf of the number of borough employees downtown Indiana, business owners, family and friends. Regarding the borough's new lease donation policy. We are asking you to reconsider the decision to prohibit direct donation of sick time between employees. And to move away from the proposed general bank. System. Sick time is for when you are sick and under the most recent contract, we've already lost six sick days. So not only are our resources more limited, but now we are being restricted in how we can use the time we do have to help a colleague and me. Nicole stated that this new policy is meant to make things fair. This new policy is exactly the opposite. Implementing a new policy when an employee has stage four cancer. And prohibiting borough employees to donate sick time is not fair. Dawn isn't a hypothetical future case. He is a real person who needs our help right now. Fairness means giving people support when they need it most and putting up red tape to prevent it. This policy doesn't reflect who we are as coworkers. Neighbors or community members. We respectfully ask you to bring back the option for direct sick time donation. Please don't turn a blind eye to someone who can truly use the help we would like to give them. That being said, I would like to present a petition to you on behalf of myself. Other borough employees. Downtown business owners and family and friends that would allow sick time to be donated directly to a specific borough employee. And not to a lean bank. So I'll wait to give this to you, Luke, and then it'd be collect the rest of the members room as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you for each.
Acknowledging all the folks that sign up.
Yeah, the business owners were really receptive because they learned a lot.
And I'm not particularly seeing that on, so that's by an admin that you were saying, okay. But. We will keep that for sure. When we get there on the. Okay. Is there any other? Anybody else want to say anything?
I will.
Sure.
I'm, uh, those of you who don't know, I'm gone before that April just spoke about. And just to give you some more background in it. In back. Quite a few years ago, my wife had to have a kidney transplant and caring for her. I used up quite a bit of my time off sick days and whatever to care for her, not knowing that a year later. I was going to be diagnosed with a cancerous tumor that took out my right kidney. And I missed work from like August to November. And used up every bit of time off that I had coming. So, you know, she was still going through problems, so as things. You know, became available to me to take time off. I was using it to care for my wife, so I didn't have a whole lot of time build up. And now recently I found out that. My cancer has returned and I'm currently undergoing treatments and. You know, using up whatever time I have to do that. I think it's very admirable of my coworkers and other, you know, borough employees to want to help me out by donating time. And I hope that you will consider being able to use the sick time. As it's felt that all time there's borough employees time. You know, whether it's a vacation, a personal day or a sick day. It's their time to use. And, you know, we grant, there's going to be some guidelines as how it can be used. But if that time could be donated. It would be appreciated. So thank you for your consideration and that and. Hope we do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Well, anybody else who feels they want to figure on anything? I know a lot of those are here for the meeting, but still, just in case. Okay, in which case then we would, we'll be moving on to community reports. Uh, admin's about to happen, so I don't know if you have much to report.
Well, I do have. Apparently. And. A, an action item. From admin. Comes out of admin because it's that kind of emotion. It did not come out of the committee, so it needs to be second. Move to appoint the following to this. As the steering committee for the Indiana Borough Endowment application. Pamela Colazo, Luke Deviser, Sheila Hoover. Shagupta, I have no idea how to pronounce that. Nicole Supers. Even Zenisec. And the PC members.
And the planning commission just had their meeting last night and they, they did nominate, uh, Ron Shirley and Bill Buttress. Yeah.
Bill was the, uh, primary. Ron was the backup, wasn't he?
Yeah, yeah.
So I make that motion however reluctantly because I've been a legislature Democrat for fifteen years.
Well, do we have a second?
Uh, I'll second that and so we can have our discussion.
Okay, moved and seconded. Yeah, I think this is worth talking about. I wasn't. Found out I was on this version an hour ago, so. Um, I, we were sort of emailing discussion briefly about what it would look like. And obviously then, I don't, and I apologize, I wasn't here for the last two meetings we had. If. We were landed on through discussion, then okay. If not, then we should discuss who should be on it.
Yeah.
So was it, was Tammy and I landed on through a discussion or? A little bit of Tammy volunteered and Luke's the president, so he gets stuck on there.
That's probably the closer to the middle ground, yeah.
Okay, okay. In which case then, folks, how do we?
What is the highest amendment of an endowment?
Unfortunately, I can't answer definitively. Um, unless you would decide that the endowment is something you want to create regardless of whether or not we get this grant. Um, if we decide that an endowment is not, uh, something that you want to pursue without the additional funds from a grant. Then that, then we can discuss what the frequency would look like. Um, upfront. The commitment for the next month after tonight would be to review the narrative, give feedback on the narrative. And then we submit it by the end of May, um, which we've talked through most of it there. Yes, which we, we, yes, and we've been discussing this. A lot of the questions are questions that you've already talked about out of the comprehensive plan. Or our basic demographic questions. It's not a, a normal grant narrative where there's a lot of. Research and opinion, um. The biggest one would be a priori prioritization of projects, which you also did out of the comp plan as part of the steering committee. Um, but Jeff and Trajan will also send out an updated one that will be done via survey. So if you want more updated information. But it's not, I know it's a close timeline that we've been talking about it and talking about it, talking about it. Um, but there isn't a lot that you would have to truly review in that. Because.
You maybe would be writing the initial responses and we would be.
Yes, yeah.
I would be willing to do it so long as it's not a committee that's writing it.
Correct. I would be writing, you would be providing feedback. That would be the upfront ask that would probably be most time consuming. Right now. Afterwards, there's the wait period. Do we get the grant? Um, I could see a couple additional meetings upfront as you're, you know, going through the, okay, exactly how do we want to raise the funds? Um, there is an outline that would be submitted when we do apply for the grant. Is there any changes to that? Uh, who is going to talk to the people, right? Those kinds of things. And then afterwards, I really truly don't see this meeting more than quarterly unless you deem absolutely necessary. Um, but knowing that we have two years to raise the funds, we wouldn't be spending any money within that first two years anyway, so there. Shouldn't be a lot of discussion on how the funds are spent in that time. Um, and then you do have a four and a half percent spending policy every twelve quarters. So that's. Still, a lot of your decisions can be made on a quarterly basis.
And we have two members of council being appointed, so say. There was like a new council member came on or one of these council members, because you guys are both.
Yeah, and.
Like if something happened like that, we can appoint somebody new or they, they're on the committee or like.
Well, it'd be representative of council. If we rotated off council, our position would break.
Yeah.
So.
And then you could appoint someone else. In the steering committee, you could appoint at a later time. They just asked that you have people who are appointed at the creation, at the onset, so that they know that there are. There has to be at minimum one council, one borough staff, one, um. Representative from the municipality. And we've.
Need to.
We don't need to. That, that's up to you if you want one of each, but in the interest of. Hey, I can't make another meeting. Uh, we kind of went to the alternate or and committee member.
We have like a person and an alternate.
Yeah.
I certainly showed an interest to get.
Yeah.
And then like an alternate, if you could make it and you does.
And we can treat all of them like that if you want with, you know, planning commission, the resident committee members and the council committee members. If you want to have a, a member and then an alternate, that's up to you on how many people you want to attend the meeting.
Substituting you for.
Yeah, I wish it's, if it's only me required, one, no, then Tammy could be the main and then if she could make it, I could come as backup.
I don't think. Well, in six months, if you have, you could just say, hey, when you were pointing someone else or whatever, right? That's my understanding. If we reach a point where suddenly somebody's busy. Yeah, I can't make it anymore. I'd like to resign. We can point, no, new, right?
As I pointed out in the motion. This Luke.
Yeah, we could.
We can't talk about it.
But we can have an amendment to the motion before we vote on the motion.
Well, we would need a minute kind of dramaticity, right? And they state that also add an alternate versus. But it removed me and Andrew and also R V.
They can still do that. Without having to vote on this and then.
Whatever the right process is, but does Jonathan Yum standing, Dawn Yum standing? I mean, any objections? Is this a secret desire?
You know, really, I mentioned to be on it, but I, I can hold off for two years until we get this thing going.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind being out either, but I don't have any time.
Yeah, you know.
So, okay.
To amend the. Uh, motion to state that, uh, Cameron Colazo. Uh, with a backup, how, I mean.
It would be, yeah, camera as, as the steering committee, yeah, they just met last night, so.
Okay.
And that would be Bill. And Ron.
As the alternate. Yes, okay. All right.
I'll second. Does that make all?
It makes sense to me. Um, I mean, Lori's on here, but just to confirm, we would say that we're amending the structure to be. Um, one steering committee member and then one alternate from all of the required parties, so. Tammy would be our, uh, council member with Jess or Casey as the alternate, um. I mean, both Nicole and I will be on it just for our different roles at the borough and then we'll have Bill as. AC member with Ron as the alternate and then two residents.
All right.
Okay, in which case then, we need to vote on the amendment, then vote on the motion, correct? Okay, so on favor of the amendment to the motion, signify at the same time. Motion, any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so back to the original motion to do all the things we just said.
Is that a roll call though? Because we're potentially spending money or?
So I would say why not? Uh, but now that we don't have anyone. But, um, I probably would. In some point, money will be spent by this person.
That's what I was thinking.
Is she able to speak yet? She's the only one who knows the alphabet.
I'm ready. I'm ready. Broad. Colazo. Can you hear me?
Yes.
She said yes.
Okay, thank you, DeBowsor. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I can't hear him. Frick. Lancaster.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Serniso. And Smith.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent. Sorry.
Okay, motion carried. All right. Congratulations. Tamara, you get more stuff to do. For, you know, double your pay, okay? Maybe even triple it. Add some zeros to your zero.
That's all I have for administration, Terry.
Okay, in which case, thank you, Kevin. On the community development, which I wasn't there for. Um, and so I'll bat into the motion, but I don't know what this is really terribly about. So motion of new development move to approve the cooperative agreement between Indiana Borough and downtown Indiana. Outline the roles and responsibilities of each partner throughout the Eighth Street Quarter Project.
Second.
I don't know if it needs it, but so what? Why not? For the mayor, we've been seconded. I wasn't there.
It, yeah, it came out of.
Okay, well, we're gonna second it anyway.
But there wasn't warrants, so.
Oh, well, there we go. We seconded anyway. Okay, so what, uh? Anyone speak into this specific plane? Train is not here either.
Uh, we do have Trajan online, but this, this agreement is, it was requested by Michael Baker. Um, as stated in there to outline the roles and responsibilities between us and DI as we are working together on the Eighth Street Quarter Project. So DI has, is contributing seven thousand dollars from the Railtors Association and then we are contributing twenty thousand from C D B G funds. Um, and in this project, we needed to outline who would be responsible for what as far as our community engagement. Um, the other planning along. As we approach the workshop in the fall, um, but Trajan is on here. I'll see if. Trajan, do you have anything else that you would like to say on the increment?
Nah, you pretty much got it all.
Do you have any additional questions?
Just from my point of reference, this is what we talked I P about, right? Pretty quickly, the Eighth Street Quarter.
Yes, yes.
Okay, moved in second. So are there any further discussion on the motion? No further discussion then. Now, is this constant, we're spending money potentially? There's money involved? No? Yes?
It's already been set aside, right?
Yeah, we've already got the grant funding and we're not spending any additional.
Okay.
Funding.
I'm all, all in favor then. I don't have much to add to any other community development related activities in the ones in here and they're more. And so anyone have any community involvement related things to add that may have been at that meeting? Nope. Okay, in which case then, moving on to, uh, public safety, Dawn, if you have anything? No. Okay. And then. Something happened, so, okay.
Yeah, it's a new business. It was through today, yeah.
Okay. But it is under, under.
Maybe you can say different.
You might have.
There's enough with different files. All right, uh, this is a change order. For the borough building Sally Port, it needs a second. I moved to approve the change order in the amount of eighty five thousand dollars to complete repairs on the Sally Port in the borough building.
I have a question on this one. Well, because it's not, it says Sally Port, but it's actually a collective chain of, of. Change orders, right? Not just a Sally Port. That's just the big, it's like half of the eighty five thousand. Is that correct to my understanding?
I believe so, yes.
So I have a question on this and forgive me because I'm somewhat ignorant on. These style change orders. Um, but my specific question was there is. An itemized. Change order on here. Where it shows three people spending twenty eight hours each. To replace twelve block. And that raised a reply with me. I was curious. How long it took three and a half days since three people. To hammer out twelve block and put twelve block in place.
Well, I'm gonna tell you that I don't have a change order. I, I have an electrical change order here. With fifteen thousand seven oh five. I don't.
Okay, well, I don't know exactly which ones that could, that we got a series of change orders that added up to the eighty five thousand or so. This happens to be won by Marsha is the, the itemized receipt, if that's ringing any bells to you. If not, you're welcome. And so my specific question just simply would be that. Either this itemized invoice isn't very itemized. Or a whole lot of people spend a whole lot of time doing not very much.
I can't answer it. I don't, I don't, I can find, I can do an answer tomorrow.
I mean, it literally took me five days, part of the time sheets, five different days. They worked on twelve block. If, again, either it's not very itemized and more happened that they just didn't put on here. Which. Sure, could certainly be the case, or. Somebody had to hold a flashlight. I don't really know.
I, 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 I get a, a report from the architects and I know they've been working with Nicole. I'm not involved in this.
Sure, well, then I don't mean to put you on the spot then. I totally understand. My question would be for the, uh, anyone who knows this answer. If we see a change order that we questioned, what is the proper procedure of which to ask the question? I know Nicole is, I don't know if she's listening or not.
I mean, she's on here. I would say we have to talk to Russ. Yeah, we have to talk to Russ.
Okay. Sure, but is that we, we would ask the question of Nicole, Nicole goes there. That's what I'm assuming, that the chain would be then.
I, I can take it back to.
Okay.
I'm at the table in motion.
So can we split is the question I was gonna ask.
What's that?
It is a security door, right? So there's gonna be like additional.
This is, this is exterior undergrad masonry work is what this particular.
Doesn't mean that we're not gonna be giving the money at some point, but if there's a question.
So the, my understanding of the reason this specifically came to us at this point was for a different piece of this change order. Trying to get somebody compensated for a major change. So I don't know if we're allowed to split them and just not approve one of them or can, do we have to approve all of them or none of them?
You have a specific change order, it's a question number.
Number eleven. Yes, that's right. And so because people did a lot of work and wanted to get paid, right? But if I have a question, I also wouldn't mind asking that question before.
Recommend approval based on getting clarification or if you don't get the clarification you look for.
Does that help getting the rest of them approved? Because we wouldn't get that clarification until the next meeting anyway.
Um, that falls.
Clarification prior to council.
Uh, so forgive me, Pat's not here to ask, neither is Nicole.
She, I, she's here.
I don't know the galaxy to that, right?
Are you sure about that P C O number? You said eleven. It looks like number five on this form.
Change order request number eleven. It doesn't mean it's.
I don't have.
The only change order request, but that's. Now, it's nine. You're right. I told you the wrong number. So. Forgive me.
Yeah, because you're describing work that didn't take place on this invoice.
Sorry, I, I, I described, I gave you the wrong, that is on me. I apologize. It's number ten.
This is one after ten, right? The one is the one with the twenty eight hours of bricklaying work.
Well, my understanding.
And that's an invoice for seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all over the place. It's that.
I have. Yeah, you're, you're here.
Okay, because I think that kicked me off when I answered.
Yeah.
That work was for the brickwork down at the base, on the base of the building, not for just regular brick. It was for the, that huge brick around the building. So those take hours for one of those, uh. Those, uh, pieces of brick, the, the, the face of the building.
So my, forgive me, and I know this, I don't know how well you can hear me, Nicole. But if this is, this is a change order. There's solid additional stone below grade on the south elevation. So.
Yes.
Only things referenced in this looked like cinder block work. They, unless, again, unless this is, unless this is poorly itemized, which is. Entirely possible and everything is completely correct. They just left something off the paper.
We, we. Worked cinderwork down to the bottom of the, the, um, base of the building along with that. Look, because there was some, we initially cut some things, but then we had to go back and, um. Add it back on because it was, it wasn't looking right with the ones that were still. Uh, half chipped off.
It doesn't make more sense to me. If you look at.
It's the large sandstone that's at the base of the building.
Yeah.
That would make more sense.
Referring to that as the cinder block at the base of the building and the, the top. They also did the top of the building. If you saw them on the top going around inch by inch with a tool. To go in between those, eh, they were there for hours on that, um. For, on that lift. It was a lot of time.
Why are they on the lift? Below grade would be underground. Under, oh, you know what? I don't know. It could be maybe.
Eight feet tall, the doors.
I don't mean to hold anything up. I just see twelve block, twenty eight hours. Like their hour runtime for their tools is even listed on there, two hours a piece. And so that's why. Wanted, wanted to ask the question.
Their payroll, I have all their payroll apps, all their hours. They have to submit that along with their, um. Their order to, to Russ and they also have to submit their, their payroll apps.
Okay, okay. Well, Nicole, if you have confidence in it, then. And then you've been the one in charge of all this going on, so I guess that's. Good enough because I don't want to hold up the rest over me just being ignorant, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, Russ would question any, uh, he questions a lot. So anything out, out of the ordinary, he definitely would question. And, um, and if he, he wasn't questioning it, I know that, 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 that block underneath that. Brick and mortar, that took a long time.
Okay, well. That's why, that's why I wanted to add and it sounds like we have an answer. So thank you for that, Nicole.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're spending money, so we definitely have any further discussion? Nope, everyone else good? Okay. Nope, everyone else good? Okay, which means then. Roll, we are spending money. Cause these are change orders, so they're not previously approved. And so. Lori, if you can hear me, can you hear me?
I can.
Lori, if you can do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Broad.
Yes.
Colazo.
Yes.
DeBowsor.
Yes.
Frick. Lancaster.
Yes.
Noel.
Yes.
Sir Niso. And Smith.
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Motion carries. All right. Which case you had nothing else to vote. Works. Yep, commission report, uh, anything that can't wait on commission report?
Other than the people who were appointed that we just talked about earlier. I don't believe so.
Okay.
We can talk about it the next main meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Two weeks to our next meeting.
Yeah, Shaitri was yesterday and then we go to that particular meeting.
And we didn't receive minutes yet either.
Yeah, I saw, I looked, I saw that. So, okay, skipping Shaitri. Excuse me. Uh, personal report, hold on the phone. Uh, I don't know if she can technically report. She did. I don't know. Whatever. Did she want to chime in with anything else or just keep moving?
Do you have anything else you want to say? Nicole's is, it's not unmuting. I don't know why.
Keep muting it.
It just keeps jumping back. Do not disturb.
Anyway. Okay, well, if she chimed in and wants to say something, we can let her. Uh, the chief is not here, but lieutenant, you got anything you want to add?
Nope.
Okay, Pat is not here. Uh, Jen is not here, nor did I see a packet. So I will save. Any extra comments for not now. Mr. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to jump in with?
Actually, no report except the, the new flags up on Philadelphia Street look very nice. They just put them up today.
Did not see that.
Yep. Uh, otherwise no report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, nothing listed or old business? Anybody got anything? No? Okay. Which case, new business, action item. So that's why the action board under the committee. Okay, okay. Well, we did a little out of order. I think we're okay though. So we did both of those things. Okay, which case then any other new business before we go into two different committees?
I just wanted to say that the Holland Officer Memorial. That they had on.
Yes, that's good.
Thursday. That was outstanding.
It was good.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, it was very good.
I would love to see more public come out.
That's still not a bad turnout.
It wasn't a bad turnout, but I emailed quite a few people and, but. Law enforcement is definitely appreciative, sacrificing their life for people that A, don't like them or B, they don't know. And, uh, so thank you.
Yeah.
For a police department hosting in the, in the community.
Yeah.
You didn't put a lot in, uh, officer noodle with a lot of groundwork in. Getting that, uh, set up. They did that a lot of time. They didn't just ask. Lot of planning.
It was beautiful.
It was very nice. Sad, didn't have to have it. On any other new business? It was change. Do we have a motion adjourned?
Say something.
Nicole, we can hear you now, Nicole.
Oh. That's, I'll follow up with the report at council meeting. Uh, the conference went really good. It's going good. So. I, I'll follow up with you guys to next meeting.